Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Chapakoa Central School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The board has been in executive session since five o'clock, discussing litigation, employment history of particular persons and matters made confidential by federal and state privacy laws and receive advice from council. Can I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting at seven eighteen?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right. So we have a number of things under the president's report tonight, but I am, as usual, going to start with a little bit of gratitude. My gratitude for tonight is to express my thanks to all the teachers and staff that conducted all the open houses across the district over the past couple of weeks since we last met. I had the opportunity to go to two. I know many of my colleagues here at the table also had attended some. It's great to see families taking the time to meet their children's teachers and get a firsthand view of facilities that were out there, that their kids are learning in day in and day out. We appreciate the time teachers spent to prepare presentations and to stay late. And it's an important connection point for community members to to start that relationship with with teachers. And so just thank you to everybody involved in pulling off all of those meetings. In terms of things to take up tonight, we're going to do the Board of Education Governor's Handbook. We're going to do the committee assignments. We're going to approve the list of people who've been assigned to help us out with the board committees. We've got a slight calendar adjustment. There's a policy to be introduced for some committee feedback. And we've got a data presentation on student performance. So we'll just take some of these one at a time, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Ackerman. So for those who didn't tune in last time, over the summer, the board developed a governance handbook for itself in terms of its own roles and responsibilities. We posted that handbook for feedback so that people could, you know, send us their input on, you know, what's all included in there. We've had a chance to look at that very little bit of feedback that came in. And so tonight, we're actually going to take up adopting that handbook for the board's use going forward. So one point, one point one is be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby adopts the Chapakoa Central School District Board of Education Governance Handbook. And I will move that we do that. Can I have a second?
One second.
Any more discussion from anybody? All those in favor? All right. Okay, terrific. Now we have a board handbook. And we'll put it up on the website and take it from there. The second thing we need to do under the president's report is we're going to, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves a list of community members for the Board Audit Committee, Communications Committee, Facilities Advisory, and the Health and Safety Committee and the Wellness Committee for a two-year term for this school year and for next school year. So can I have a motion to approve those lists of community members? Any more discussion of that? I'll just say thank you to like the huge amount of interest we got for several of the committees. It's really great that we had a lot of talented people to pick from and appreciate everybody wanting to get involved. So all those in favor?
I will just add that if people don't already know that these, even though if you haven't been selected, you are still free to attend these meetings because they're all open to the public.
Good point. Thank you. Third item on our presence report is we are making one shift to one of the meeting dates in January. So we just need to adopt that formally. So be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby adopts the revised two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting calendar. Can I have a motion for that? All those in favor? Okay, and yeah, the rest of the stuff that I mentioned will be coming later in the meeting. So over to you, Dr. Ackerman.
Right, thank you. Okay, Andrew, would you like to introduce Andrea Shaver as a West Orchard interim?
Of course. So I'm really pleased to present you for your approval, Andrea Shaver, as the interim assistant principal at West Orchard Elementary School. She's been there as the library media specialist. She's also been recommended for the FSLA program, the Future School Leaders Program, that the district sponsors and it's run through Bosse's and Bank Street. I went through it. A number of people went through it. She is most of the way through there eligible for an internship certificate, which allows her to work under that credential as she is finishing. We went through a search process. We're really happy to have her step into the role. She knows the building. She's very talented, hardworking, and knowledgeable. And she's there for your consideration.
And now on the agenda, thank you, Andrew, we have a merger request for gymnastics. And Jamie Block is joining us by Zoom. He's been working on this for about a year and a half. So Jamie, do you want to talk a little bit about this merger request that you're asking the board to consider?
Yes, I apologize. I'm not there. So gymnastics came up a couple of years ago, different parents, and a number of different schools looking to start a gymnastics program. A merger is when a number of schools get together to form a team when you don't have the facilities or the finances or the number of athletes. So for example, we are presently merged for girls' ice hockey. Originally, it came up and it was going to be housed at World Cup, which is located right down in Chapakoa, which was, you know, very exciting and would have been really unique and special for our kids. But unfortunately, they are not willing to do it. So it is now going to be up at Eclipse in Maipack. At this juncture, it is Byram Hills will be the lead school. The schools that are interested in participating are Greeley, Irvington, Briar Cliff, Sleepy Hollow, and Westlake. Gymnastics is unique, and then only a certain number of individuals actually get to compete and perform. So there would wind up possibly being reductions. We have a few girls that are very interested in it, and I think it would be a unique opportunity to offer them this.
So before Jamie hops off the Zoom, are there questions from the board about this merger on the agenda?
I just, Jamie, the, I think you named six schools that all sort of merge as one with the host being Byram. Who do they actually compete against?
So there's not many individual gymnastics programs anymore. There's a number of schools that are merged, and there's a few individuals like Maipack and things like that. But there's still about about twelve schools. We would be a Division One school. And we already, there's already a schedule. It's about eight competitions at random sites. We would still look to try to host one at Eclipse. And so it's all different athletes without throughout Section One, and then obviously, and they also host a state championship as well.
Hillary, did you have a question?
I'm just trying to understand the athletes who would try out for this team are all current gymnasts, right? There just isn't a high school program for them?
No, that's correct. It's not, um, so similar to swimming and hockey, you have to be proficient in these events. It's not where, hey, I've never done gymnastics because I want to try it. These are all pretty high-level gymnasts. These are all pretty high-level gymnasts that, um, from level eight up to level nine. We have one gymnast in our school, I believe, is a level nine right now. So these are all very experienced gymnasts. It's not where you're coming out and want to learn the sport. These are going to be pretty high-level kids.
If anyone could sign up and register to try out.
That's correct. Yeah, the registration is open, and there'll be a tryout. And we may have athletes from Greeley. We may not.
Are there?
It's just creating the opportunity.
For Jamie?
So can I ask a follow-up then?
Yeah.
What are, let's say we offer this, and I'm sure our athletes are great. But let's say we offer this opportunity and none of our athletes make the team. What are our obligations then?
There's no financial obligation then. The finances are broken down based on the number of participants that actually are on the team.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. You can hop off the Zoom. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. So now I'd like, Jamie, that we have our mentors on the calendar this evening, on the agenda this evening. So Jamie, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Two years ago, we started a, excuse me, a faculty-student mentor program. And last year, most of our mentors continued with the mentees that they had the year prior. This year, we have eight mentors that are taking on new mentees, and we're really excited about it. We're having our meeting tomorrow to go over the expectation of the program. We have already reached out to parents about the opportunity to have a faculty mentor. And the the commitment that the mentor makes is to meet with the mentee three times, for thirty minutes, once per six-day cycle for the course of the school year. And they meet at their school, talk about things that are important to the student. It is not in any way counseling or therapy. It is really just to ensure that the student has a trusted adult in their school community. So parents were very excited. The mentors are very excited. The mentees will find out that they are getting, they're starting with their mentor sometime next week. So we are really excited about about making this happen again for this upcoming school year.
Right. And just to also mention, on the agenda tonight, under the sixes is our ruler contract. And ruler is the approach that we use in our K through eight buildings to support our SCL work. And so in the elementary classrooms during back-to-school night, our teachers may have mentioned during morning meetings, some of the core routines that they do that are anchored in the ruler approach at a Yale University. And then our middle school advisories, five through eight, have a series of lessons they do on social emotional learning. And I just want to also mention that in the high school, we've started advisory this year. But their program is based on one trusted adult from Brooklyn Rainey. And that was an adjustment we made based on a pilot that occurred over the course of last year in our life school. And now we're using that program in our ninth and tenth grade advisory, which our high school will be talking about when they present to the board at a future meeting. And then I also wanted to mention during the, and Ryan had, Ryan had also shared that the Policy Committee has created a new policy for a first reading tonight that is anchored in the First Amendment. And so we'll be reading that when it comes to that time on the agenda. And the Policy Committee discussed pushing that out to the community on Sunday during the week to get some feedback before we move into a second reading of this particular policy. So we'll talk about that more when we get to the threes. And so at this point, I want to transition over to Adam, who's going to be doing our data presentation. And what we'll do because of the way that we've situated ourselves today is Adam will go slide by slide. And if the board has feedbacks or questions on each slide, he'll pause, and we'll take them at that time if that's okay with the Board of Education. So it's more of a discussion rather than Adam presenting a whole bunch of slides and then taking questions. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman. Get myself situated here. So we normally do an annual assessment report in two parts. This year, the state has released the state data. Typically, we break out the state data, and then we have to wait for the embargo to be lifted. But now currently, the embargo has been lifted, so I can share all of the data that we have for the Board of Education report. This first slide here is just to orient you in terms of how the report is organized. I'm going to share the MAP scores, which we give in grades one through eight, the New York State testing scores, three through eight, and the fifth grade, the current sixth graders, last year's fifth graders, were treated to a brand-new science assessment. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We've got some regions exam results, advanced placement exam results, ACT and SAT. So that's kind of our roadmap for the evening. We're going to start with the MAP scores. And as I said, given to students in grades one through eight in both ELA and math. And so I know for many of our board members, you've seen these graphs before, but I'll try to kind of orient you as we go so you get a sense of what we're looking at. In this case, you see, these are average scores for grade levels. You see grade one going all the way up to grade eight. And the students take the MAPS assessment in both ELA and math three times each year. So they take it once, right when they get back to school in the fall, once in the winter, and then once again in the spring. And that way, we can track growth of students. Now, one of the neat things about the MAPS assessment is that it's a smart assessment. And we'll actually remember, like, quote-unquote, remember the student and start the student with questions that are of a level of difficulty where they kind of left off. And then it'll make the questions more difficult or less difficult, depending on the answers. So it'll calibrate for each student. So as you give it to a class of first graders, they'll actually, after the, after they answer a few questions, some of the students will be getting easier questions, some more difficult. So that's very different than a New York State assessment. And the other thing that's nice about the MAPS assessment is it's nationally normed with a few million, a million students or so. And you can track numbers over time. So the number scale doesn't change. It's the same number scale from grade one all the way up through grade eight. And so the students are kind of marching up. You can think of them as steps as they go up the numbers. They call that a RIT score. So here you can see grade one on the left, eight all the way on the right. And this, this kind of leveling off is actually part of the norm. I'm going to show you this graph with a norm line in just a minute so you can get a sense. But what we're looking for here is that students are growing with each administration of the assessment. We're going to talk a little bit more about that eighth grade, that final assessment in eighth grade in a minute. But I do note that that last bar all the way on the right side is actually a little bit lower, which we'll talk about in terms of the amount of assessments that our eighth graders are taking. Yeah.
Here, that's your ninth grade.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, this is all, yep. So, yes, so this is the fall two thousand and twenty-three, winter two thousand and twenty-three, spring two thousand and twenty-four. So this is like a snapshot for that grade level over the course of the year. So in this case, you can't really track a cohort other than the cohort within that same grade. And here you see the orange line is the fall norm. So kind of the average score of the larger kind of million students that they norm this assessment with. That's the norm for the fall assessment. And then that light blue line is the norm for the spring assessment. So you can get a sense of how our district is doing compared to those national norms. So and we're looking for, you can see that norm curve kind of leveling out towards the right. And you see the big jumps down towards the left side, first grade, second grade, third grade. And our students kind of track along those norms and are above them in each grade.
And Adam, is that because we're essentially kind of maxing out what somebody can get?
Yeah, there's partially that, but it's also the kind of great gains in literacy. And part of the reason there's such like a focus on that early literacy primary grades where students really gain those skills in how to read. And if if all goes well in those first, you know, couple of grades, those primary grades, and then that, you know, that does level out over over time. But it does kind of put an exclamation point on the importance of a really strong program, which we've talked a lot about, K one, two. That's where students are supposed to, you know, see those those great gains there. All right, here you'll see, we're still with, we're sticking with ELA. But in this case, you're seeing, we're just taking the spring two thousand and twenty-four assessment. So this is the, basically, the May-June assessment. And you're looking at how the score ranges break down by grade. So to read this, the larger the orange is, the better. That's the kind of highest scoring bracket that you can be in. A large orange and kind of dark blue is a pretty good, strong thing. And then, you know, obviously, for the low, that light blue, you want that to be as small as possible. So as you kind of read this across, you can see the different grades. I would, you know, kind of call your attention to a couple of pieces here. One of them is, although it's really strong across the board in terms of high and high average, you do see from fifth to sixth to seventh to eighth, that that line, if you were to draw a line across that dark blue, is trending in the wrong direction. You really want it to trend in the opposite direction where the students are getting stronger over time. So that's something with our seventh and eighth grade program that are, we've got two groups kind of looking at that. One of them is our strategic planning fellows that are looking at kind of rigor across that seventh, eighth, and into high school. And also our literacy fellows are looking at that as well. So that's, you know, one thing I'd be thinking about. The other thing that that stood out to me is second grade. And as you look at like first grade compared to second grade, one of the things that I did in this case is I pulled the two thousand and twenty-three. Let's see where I laid it over there. It's two thousand and twenty-three. That's that cohort that's now in second grade. So they actually strengthened from their first grade scores to their second grade scores. Because now where it says two thousand and twenty-three, I actually have my laser here. I can kind of point it out. So this is two thousand and twenty-three cohort laid over. And you can see that these, they actually, there were more kids that scored in this high bracket. And then also kind of diagonal. So this, this particular cohort actually got stronger as they went from first grade into second grade with regard to their scores. But when you compare them to the other, you know, compare them to our current first graders and our current third graders, you see that they're relatively not as strong, or they didn't score as well. So this is something that we're thinking about in terms of being able to drill into that grade level and see, you know, how the schools are performing and how various classrooms are performing and even individual students are performing. All right. So here's the ELA year-to-year. This is the middle school, grade five, six, seven, and eight. We've done quite a bit of work in fifth grade, redesigning fifth grade over the last couple of years. So now fifth grade has the two-person teams. And we've restructured the curriculum in fifth grade pretty significantly across the board, math, science, English, social studies. And you can see those pretty significant gains there. I guess it, I'd also say that if a student, like if a cohort stays in, let's say they're like sixty-six in fifth grade and then sixty-six in sixth grade, that would mean they're kind of keeping pace. So another way to read this is the fifth graders, like if you look at this forty-eight in fifth grade, those students are the same as the sixty-six when they're in sixth grade, because it's the following year. And then they maintain sixty-six in the next year. So that's another way to look at this, where you can look, like, follow a cohort over time, which you can do on this graph. You couldn't do that in the previous graphs. So if you're, if you're looking at like this sixty-one here, they were a sixty-four and a sixty-four. That's the same cohort. And to stay at a same, the same number means you're kind of like keeping pace because every year that that bar moves for the grade level.
So the group that got sixty-one in eighth, the year before, they were sixty-four in seventh, and then sixty-four in sixth? Am I reading that right?
That's right.
So that group isn't really making gains. So.
Right. So, so no, the the bar is moving with each grade. So if they stay a sixty-six each year, then that means they're keeping pace with a year's growth in a year's time. And if they're above the norm, then they're staying at that sixty-six, kind of sixty-six score across there.
Because they're being compared against a whole big cohort. As long as they improve, they're going to keep the same percentage ranking as long as they improve at the same rate as the average.
This is the percent of students that are in the high and the high average kind of bracket. So that that bracket gets more rigorous each year. And so if they stay in the sixty-six percentile, you're comparing the sixty-six percentile of fifth graders compared to sixth graders compared to seventh as they move along.
Okay.
And then if the number increases, like the fifth grade that I was pointing out there, that forty-eight, that's this cohort, the orange cohort, forty-eight jumps up to a sixty-six. That's the kind of like they're outpacing a year's growth in a year's time is the is the idea there. All right. So here we're transitioning over to math. You'll see the same graphs for math. You can see that, again, there's larger jumps for second, third. But in this case, it's a little bit more linear than you saw before. I do want to mention, I didn't mention it with the ELA, our eighth graders take a number of assessments. They take the New York State, they take the Algebra Regions, the Living Environment Regions, the New York State Assessment in ELA, the New York State Assessment in Math, two MAPS assessments, and the Checkpoint A Assessment. And so it's a lot of assessments. And so we've thought about of all of those assessments, like which ones are not required. The MAPS isn't necessarily required. We had been giving it because we made so many changes to eighth grade that it gave us a way to be able to track students over time. But we also, I think the students are also pretty aware that, like, where to put their energy and their focus. And I think they're kind of doubling down on regions exams and things like that. And when it comes to the MAPS assessment, which for many of these kids have been just taking it for years, that I'm not sure how reliable the eighth-grade MAPS assessments are with all those other assessments that are there. They're kind of getting that assessment fatigue. So that's something we need to do a little bit of thinking about for our eighth graders. It's a lot of assessments. We do try to spread them out through May and June, but they all have to be towards the end of the year.
My kids are younger, so it's like, you know, choose your own adventure. They show up. It ends up UEA Day. The eighth graders, they know, like, when the test is coming.
Yeah.
But they're, you're saying like, this is not a test they're preparing for because this has sort of been given to them every year over time, whereas the regions, they're taking more seriously. And it's a, it's a bigger, more impactful exam.
Yeah.
But, but.
But no grade is really preparing for it. So. Right. So it's, this is, this is how it's supposed to be, right? The NWEA is supposed to be an assessment where you don't prepare and you just sort of go with it. So it wouldn't matter if it was eighth grade.
It's, they're taking it not as seriously because they've taken it for seven years already, and they know that they have more important things on the board.
Maybe, maybe.
Perhaps.
It's a factor that we have to think about as kids get older and they start to realize the value, that what that equates to for them.
Yeah, I don't think our eighth graders are reading less well at the end of the year than they were in the beginning of the year or in the middle of the year. I think it's just a factor of them kind of, you know, choosing where to put their energy at that point. But, but yeah, it's also, it's very difficult to prepare for an NWEA test because I'm like a state assessment, whereas state assessment, you're getting that grade level's questions. And so we have sample questions, and teacher can practice and, you know, have those experiences. For NWEA assessment, the students are kind of all over a range. And so a student's math questions that one student might be seeing could be a few grade levels above where another student is seeing the questions. And so it becomes much more challenging. It's also supposed to be a very low-stakes kind of dipstick type assessment because of the frequency of it. All right. So here again, you see the math ranges by grade level. This is just the spring assessment for last year. So this is like the current second graders are here as as first graders. And you can see the orange and dark blue are kind of the desirable ones, the high and high average. And you can see how those distribute. Again, in this case, I, you know, that that second grade is one that I am kind of paying attention to and we should be paying attention to, which are now current third graders. And I put in, I layered over the two thousand and twenty-three, just again, to show you in grade one, when that cohort kind of moved to grade two. And again, it's a, we want to see a lengthening of the orange, if possible, and the blue, if possible. And in this case, we didn't see that. And so it's something that we need to drill down into and have a little bit more information so we can make some decisions there.
Adam, do you think that there's any correlation? And you probably don't have an answer for this. I don't think anybody would. In the cohorts that were in these developmental years during COVID, like when they miss kindergarten, you know, and or first grade. And so is there any correlation at all? Have we done any studies? Do you think that has something to do with it?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't, I don't have that information.
Yeah, it's not really.
Sometimes you see articles kind of on the, on the national level about learning loss and COVID. I haven't been seeing it in terms of the students in like upper elementary school. I was worried about those like K one, two, that experience in terms of the academics. We haven't seen that dip, like stay and persist all the way through. But, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal information that parents have given me.
Right. Because if the second grade, which would be third grade, they wouldn't have been in school. But they would have been in that, those years where it's the preschool nursery where they would have gotten exposure to just being in a classroom, being part of a group setting. Because our schools were open. I mean, we're grateful for that, and we did tremendous during those years. But I think there might be some type of correlation where if there was the loss before kindergarten age, and that's showing up in the third graders now.
Well, that cohort was back half of their threes year, their threes program, so.
Right. So threes, tree school.
Right. And then their, their fours year was that first COVID year out of COVID. So they, when they got to kindergarten.
Right.
They were sort of matriculating.
Yeah, part of the good news with with these, all of these data is that they all come from individual students, and those students are known to us. And so we can drill all the way down to the building level, to the teacher, you know, to the classroom level, and then into the individual student level. And so, you know, in this case, you're kind of getting a thirty-thousand-foot view of the district. But we can kind of slice and dice that, what is that second grade cohort to figure out what's going on there? And how can we potentially address it in terms of the, this, you know, kind of scoring there? All right. So this, just like ELA, this is math for year-to-year. You can see twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And these are the students that were in the high or high-average achievement level over time. And again, in this case, you're looking for at least the keeping pace. So in fifth grade, if you're looking all the way to the left, the orange bar, the sixty-six, those are the seventy-three in sixth grade. And then they become eighty-two in seventh grade. So you can follow a cohort in that way. Or you can just kind of look at a grade level over time. And both of those things will give you a little bit of information with regard to how the system is working for students.
We just stop. So we're about to transition out of the NWEA. So are there any remaining questions before we move into state testing?
So again, the eighth grade in the twenty-four year seems to have be a little dip compared to the two previous eighth-grade cohorts. But I know you already talked about sort of NWEA exhaustion, perhaps, is what's happening in the springtime. Is now that those kids are at Greeley, is there a way, I guess, to follow that cohort again through their very, through their math and English courses in ninth grade to see if there's supports that we can, if they need support or if it really was just test exhaustion, you know?
Yeah. So they, they do not take, once they're done with the eighth-grade math assessment.
They don't take them.
They don't take a regions exam. So we start to lose some of that kind of, like, the nationally norm data. They don't take a MAPS assessment anymore. They don't take a regions exam anymore. But, you know, as many of you have experienced, the Greeley. Um but the, you know, as as many of you have experienced, the Greeley programs are really strong. And you know, anecdotally, we're hearing the students coming out of the middle school are strong students there. We can track how many students over time. Decide to take, you know, some of the most advanced math classes, how many students are getting into like an AP calculus or something like that in the most advanced math track. Um that's, those are some of the data. I'm not going to present them tonight, but we can look at the C kind of how how do those students actually like track as they get into Greeley. But yeah, this is this is um for math all the way on the right side there in eighth grade, the the students are taking three math assessments.
Right.
And you know, taking the New York State math assessment, the algebra assessment and then this.
Right, and this one counts the least as far as.
That's correct, right? That's right. Alright, so we're going to transition to New York State ELA math and science. We give those assessments or they're required to be given in grades three through eight. I did want to remind you, this is a slide that I shared with you last year. Um two thousand and twenty one, New York State reused some content and and all all the way down to some of the teachers' practice, some of the content just a day or two before the assessment. And then the same reading passage was there that they already used to practice the day before. And in other cases, maybe the classroom next door, the teacher also practiced, but they picked a different passage or or different release question. Um and so we had some real questions about, you know, how how why the state made that decision. We expressed some concerns to the state at the time and assured that information with parents. But um that that does, you know, impact these scores in some ways that make it complicated to interpret them. And then in two thousand twenty two, this is a screenshot of a letter that I sent home to parents. Um this assessments were unusually long. They they seem to just take a long time for students. And they are untimed assessments and and our students generally work so diligently on them that in in some cases, they spent hours, you know, hours and hours working on these assessments. So um it it seemed to be a test not only of. What they were testing, but it was a stamina test as well. And so um you know, you start to start to, when you compare year to year, it gets a little bit more complicated to draw the kinds of conclusions that we. Would like to be able to draw. Um so the New York State ELA tests, uh multiple choice and open ended questions, students apply their knowledge and open ended responses, explain their reasoning, they read text, they write constructed responses. There are some multiple choice questions mixed in. Um and last year, uh some of you may have heard from your own children that we transitioned to computer based testing for all students. So uh New York State launched computer based testing in two thousand and sixteen. It wasn't required until two thousand and twenty four. In two thousand twenty four, it was only required for two grades. And we have been interacting with many school districts and hearing about their experiences with computer based testing and we weren't confident earlier on that we should do it. Um but last year, we got to a point where some of our administrators actually had worked in other districts that had done computer based testing and they. Um gave us good reports of the recent computer based tests and also um we didn't want to run two different systems. So last year it was required to C B T, they call it computer based testing in grades five and eight. We didn't want to do computer based testing in five and eight and then paper based and in the others and just have a split system. So we did transition last year to all computer based testing, three through eight, yeah.
If that's gonna be a great format for other kids, it may be harder. Um. What are the students allowed to have in terms of, are they especially I'm getting the math more so, but some students, the ELA, like it's important. Can they have scrap paper? Can they have writing implements like can students? Make this work in a way that works for them or is it, are they limited to their device?
No, they can't, they can use scrap paper. They can use, you know, reg- regular writing implements, but then then it uh introduces other things like they have to kind of transfer answers and things like that. And there also, there are um tools that the computer based testing platform has, like little protractors and rulers and things that the students can like manipulate on the screen. Which for some students is e- easily done and other students are really struggle with that. And so um there is a way from the state for students to practice that and teachers had students go on and they could practice with those tools, like there are highlighters and things like that. But as you said, some students just pick it up and they'd rather do it that way and other students, it was a harder thing to transition to. Um so I think that that will, you know, impact our scores. The state does norm their paper based and their computer based tests separately. So they have like to try to level the scores, but I'm not, I'm not really sure how that even works across schools with different. Opportunities, resources, um you know, et cetera, et cetera, and and who's choosing which, so. Those are all just variables that we got to consider, yeah.
And how did it go with the switch over to all computer based? Were there glitches? Was there technology trouble?
Yeah, there wasn't. That was, there was, um, we heard a lot of stories about the state site over the years not being as reliable. It would freeze, students would lose work. Um last year, we didn't have any of those problems. It seemed to be smooth. Our wifi was robust enough. Our devices worked with it, so we didn't. We didn't have many problems at all. It was a smooth administration. And in many ways, it's it's also easier administratively to be able to. Submit the tests. You're not dealing with, you know, thousands, tens of thousands of sheets of paper and test booklets and things like that. So. The administration part is easier, but the the state is moving two grades per year onto that computer based testing anyway, so it's going to be fully. C B T in just a few years, two thousand twenty six is all computer based testing for everyone. So it was kind of inevitable that we're moving in that direction. Alright, so with that, just as a reminder, there's four levels on the New York State assessment. Uh level four is the Excel level, level three is proficient. That means you're proficient by grade level, level two is partially proficient and level one is below proficient. So they say, you know, talk a lot about um proficiency percent, and that's basically students that score a three or a four. So I have some of these that are based on, some of my slides are based on proficiency, some are, um I actually have the levels broken down. Um there are parent score reports, those have been released. They're in the campus backpack. I sent the letter. If parents haven't seen those or if they're having any trouble accessing them, they could. You know, reach out to myself or any of the building administrators can help them. Um the score reports um often will have parents ask us, how's my student doing compared to students in Chappaqua? And the score report actually does give you a breakdown of um the like the school average, it gives you your child's average, the school average and also the state average. Or school average, district average, state average, so you can, you know, parent can see that um report. And it also breaks down their score and some sub areas as well. Alright, so this is ELA grade three through eight. You can see this is twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four by grade. This is percent proficient, so this is students that scored a three or a four. Again, you can compare, you know, how is a particular grade level doing, or you can per compare a cohort as you jump colors as you go from the left to the right.
Can you talk about third grade and the trend that you're seeing there?
Yeah, you know, it's it's um, when you're looking at a trend like that, one of the challenges is they're not the same students. And so the cohort's changing, but you're also thinking about like quality of curriculum in terms of like what is the, is the curriculum robust enough to give the students the experience that they need to do well on the assessment? And when I show you, we're gonna um in a minute, I'll show you the breakdown of third grade and like how students score within third grade and and we'll revisit that question if I don't remind me in just a slide here.
I would see like a total blip that grade five in twenty twenty two. Seeing as where they ended up in in grade six and grade seven.
We changed the model instructionally and I think that translated to higher scores. But in addition to some of the concerns we have with the validity of the actual test, but I I think we saw that in the N W A scores as well.
And was that the year that was only multiple choice or or that was twenty one?
No, I think that was, I don't I don't want to guess. I can go back there if we. And we can look in.
That was twenty one.
Yeah, yeah, so so um. In many school districts, dare I say, most school districts, fifth grade is still in the elementary school and teachers have a lot of flexibility with regard to how long they teach ELA and math. And in most elementaries, I think it's safe to say um that the teachers do spend more time on math in ELA than they do on, let's say, social studies and science. In many cases, they'll alternate days, social studies and science. Our middle school experience, it gets students earlier transitioning to. Kind of a more mature secondary like model. Um but the challenge that we were having was we didn't have that same teacher flexibility. And we also were asking pretty young kids to transition between lots of different teachers. And so part of our change in model was to just have two core teachers, one math, science, one English, social studies. So that reduced from kind of four content areas to two content areas. So students then have to transition same classroom and give those periods back to back. So the teacher could um flexibly, if you're the ELA social studies teacher, you could one day do sixty minutes of ELA and you know, less, a little less social studies. Or you could do, you know, a double period of social studies if you wanted to, so to to provide that flexibility. It also created teams of fifty students and two teachers as opposed to a hundred students and four teachers, just kind of rough math. Um and so it created a little bit more of like a nested experience for the students. So um I think all those things paid dividends, as Dr. Ackerman said, and you could see the increase over time in that fifth grade program. But but you're right, we're also tracking that that blue two thousand twenty two line. Um there are the sixty five group here. You know, how did they rebound after that? There's also the eighty four and then the eighty seven. So as a cohort, they did, they did bounce back, but um. You know, that that, so we can track them over time. Alright, so here's the ELA distribution, three through eight, level one, level two, level three, level four. You see that um these these tests are designed to be more of a kind of normal distribution or what somebody might refer to as like a a bell curve distribution. And in this case, you see that skewed to the right, which is a a positive thing. Now, listen, you had asked the question about third grade. I thought I had a a distribution within third grade that I didn't have um with me here. But again, that's a cohort that we're going to have to, we're going to drill in a little bit this year, their current fourth grader, so we can drill in and see how they're doing this year. Um and also, you know, watch how they're they're performing. Also watch the current third graders because it could be kind of a curriculum thing, we need to make adjustments. Um or it could end or it could be a cohort thing where we want to watch students track over time. That would be how we address that. Alright, so the math test, this is just a a quick overview of what the math test entails. Here is the percent proficient. Um students that score a three or a four. And again, this is the chart because it's two thousand twenty one to twenty four that you can track a cohort or you can. Kind of look at a grade level over time. You see that, you know, the longer bars are to the right, which is the a good thing. It's kind of a strengthening of program and and skills of the students. And then you see again that math distribution three through eight leaning to the right side.
Yeah, every year, this presentation up until like this year, it's, we've always talked about fifth grade. And so I think some of this, and it's been a target area for the board to make sure that we addressed it.
Yep.
And so I feel like um Adam and the fifth grade teachers really did a lot of work over the course of the last four years to get to a place where. We saw um or you at least see through our results in both different mechanisms. That it's starting to have an impact on how students are performing, because that is a hard year for kids. There's a lot of research about transitioning from one building to the next and how that impacts performance, so. So I acknowledge that, Adam. It was, it was a, that was an easy thing.
I think Hillary has a question.
Yeah.
Close.
Aren't performing as well for the. Is it? Is there overlap between students who are not doing, who are not proficient in math, who are not proficient in ELA? Or do you have? Students who are really struggling in one area but not. The other. Or is it all over the map and the numbers just came out?
No, I think, no, I think both are true. You know, what we what we typically find is is both are true, that in some cases you could. You know, make a prediction of who those students are, you know, in some cases they're our English language learners, for example, in some cases it's um a student with a disability or students with disability. Not that that, you know, we have many that are just thriving and ended up in the threes and fours, but there are some that struggle there in that category. Um so so they're, you know, they're all over the, all over the map. In some cases, you get students that are thrive in one and struggle in the other. In other cases, they kind of struggle in school. And so they don't do as well in both. We do have um at the, you know, we have like math, we have the um. M T S S system and and supports provided for students that do fall below certain kind of thresholds. And there's the building level teams that support those students and make recommendations and track data on the student level.
You know, we, when we're having conversations with parents around student performance, we don't anchor in the New York State assessments typically, we anchor in maps. Because it has more information, better information. And we at least believe it's a better measure of student performance, which is why we expanded that down to first grade. Um im- implemented it through the first strategic planning process. And Jamie, Adam, would you agree with that? Um, because this, the tests, um, they're a tool for the state to hold us accountable. Not necessarily a tool for us to guide our instructional practices per se. Particularly based on when they release information to us and how they do it and how they recycle all the test questions to. Make the assessments that they have, like administer, I mean, it's like, so maps is really, I think, the more um influential tool on on the decisions that we make. Right, and.
Generally. For a level one or two, also those score high on the N W E A. There is, you know, one in the predictor on the other.
And actually, maps has a predictor tool within it too. So we can see now if a student would be struggling. If they were to take that test at the um. At the end of the year and then we can provide intervention services. So maps is really beneficial for us in a lot of different ways.
And just from a parent perspective, I, we don't get the state test results till the following fall. And and so they're not very helpful.
Mm hmm.
At that point, from a parent's perspective, um and the N W A maps we get throughout the year.
Right.
And if you are using that as more your indicator. Or I know on the state test, if you get a one or a two, like you automatically get the services or flag for looking for, looking at the student. Is there also a certain score that on the maps test that flags kids?
Yeah, so maybe Jamie, you can talk a little bit about that as the person who oversees it.
All below the fortieth percentile on the N W E A, which is a pretty high threshold. The fortieth percentile as well in the average range. It's not even really considered low average. And we've had lots of conversations with other districts about that, but it does seem that. Kids who score below the fortieth percentile do experience some difficulty in the classroom. So we usually look at around the twenty first percentile to the fortieth for like. A tier one or a tier two intervention to give them some support in reading or math. Whether that's a support in the classroom where they may be seen by the classroom teacher in a small group more frequently. Or whether it's they see a reading teacher. Um and then those students who are from the first percentile to the twentieth get a more intensive intervention. Usually with a reading teacher, sometimes one on one, depending on on what the score is. Um, so that's kind of like a rough. Range, um but uh a- and I will say, just only because I just looked at the middle school today. That we have very few kids qualifying for A I S with the N W A. And we, I want to say we have about forty kids in the building. That scored below the fortieth percentile, which is. A a huge change. Um from what it was.
I also, I also want to share and I and I don't need, like, the the New York State assessments. Are challenging for kids and we are like top, top, top in the state. So our our numbers are really impressive. So I don't want to, I don't want to um discount that at all and the work that's happening in classrooms for us to. Um have results in this way. I just also want to underscore the importance of measuring growth over time, over the course of the year, because that's more. Important for us in terms of acting on what kids need in the moment versus receiving a snapshot. Months after we've started school without the specificity that could drive like strategy groups and individual instruction. Thanks.
Before you move on, I did have, are we seeing much opt out like these days?
Or not, then the number is very low.
We appreciate that too.
Yeah.
Appreciate the kids are saying.
Because it helps to have people get assessed so that we can then identify the right supports where we need it, yeah. Okay.
And then they'll. Get her less than ten.
And and maps to kids don't, they cannot really opt out. Opt out is like a a movement for the state assessments. We use the maps to determine A I S services for kids and that is part of like the curriculum. So parents don't, that's not even a question for parents.
Yeah, it's also um for a school district, you have to have ninety percent, ninety five percent of your students participate. If you don't, then you have to, they put you on kind of a, like, you have to develop a corrective action plan. So there's all kinds of um dare I say bureaucracy attached to that that we can avoid by just ta- taking the test, using the information, having the data. Um it's, it I think it's probably our best, our best course forward. Um, alright, so let me move on to the science assessment. So the um students used for many years took the science assessment in fourth grade. And then there was a, the fourth graders didn't have to take it in fourth grade because they were going to take it in fifth grade. And then last year was the first time we gave this or we had, we were required to give this New York State science assessment in fifth grade. So these are our current sixth graders. This was last spring's scores. Um you, we had never seen this assessment before, that we did have some, some guidance with regard to how to prepare students for it. But um you can see that this, this distribution is a little bit different than our other like math and ELA distributions. Um you do see for our district, we were seventy six percent proficient compared to New York State as a whole. Um I don't have more granular data from the state, but I do have statewide. They said that the New York, in New York State, for both the fifth grade assessment and the eighth grade assessment, the. The average was thirty five percent proficient. And I fully understand that um we're resourced differently than so many districts, but it just gives you. And I fully understand that we're resourced differently than so many districts, but it just gives you a sense of across the state where where students are kind of falling on this assessment. I I really don't know what will happen with regard to the future of this. Sometimes it takes the state a few years to calibrate the assessment. And so our students, the scores may change a- a- and we're not really going to be sure if that's because of changes that we made or or adjustments that they're making to their own scaling and scoring and those kinds of things. But for now, this is, this is what it is. It was a fairly challenging test. You can see that our our students with seventy-six proficient did pretty well. But now that we have a better sense of what's going to be on that assessment, our goal is going to be to to kind of shift this up to the right side. But it usually does take the state some time to calibrate their scoring and scaling of these assessments.
Ian, much more well versed in his assessments and the curriculum. This strikes me that if thirty-five percent of your state students are considered proficient, then maybe it probably be a spam. Like I, I'd like to believe that more than thirty-five percent of the kids in this state are getting a reasonable education in science.
It's a big state, Hillary.
I do, I don't know if you remember this, but when they revised the math and E L A common core exams for three through eight, the same thing happened the first year. The uh, the, it was, it was the exact same thing. And if I, I wasn't here at the time, I was at a different district. But if I looked at probably this, the spread and how we did compared to the state, I I bet you'd be probably pretty similar. So would you agree with that, Adam?
Yeah, absolutely. I I was just looking up the New York State average for E L A, three through eight is forty-six percent proficient. So I know it's like I'm changing subjects on you to E L A, but for us, we're hovering, we're hovering between eighty and ninety. And for the state, you're looking at like forty-six percent. But yeah, it's not thirty-five, but it's still, it's a
I mean, it's, it's alarming, but it's true. There are lots of kids in state all over the country that are struggling to read and write and and do science. It's, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's, it's better, but it's it's, I don't think it's the test. I think it's the education.
Adam, is the structure that has also the same open-ended questions and multiple choice?
It is, it is. And we're also seeing that many of these tests, these science tests, including the living environment slash biology tests, there, there are also reading tests. There's a lot of reading. There's a lot of passages. There's a lot of kind of a technical terminology vocabulary.
To Kaylee's point, it is correlative with the fundamental reading.
One of the strategies that they use is they raise the standards and they want everyone to close the gap. So you get the first year of the test, kids don't do well. And then the expectation as you close your gap and then you do better the following year. And so that's what they did with
And then they start recycling the questions. So everybody
But that, that's, that's their typical strategy for the three through eight tests, at least I've seen over my time.
Does the state put forward what proficiency level they're looking for from a score?
Well, three and four, but now because they've done an administration of this, they will release not the, you know what, I, I don't. It's hard to predict what they'll do, but they will provide additional resources for districts to begin to plan around to support adjustments in their curriculum. That's their typical, like first it's the scores, then they start to release exemplars.
I meant more like, is there a proficiency percentage that they, that they
Would like a hundred?
I mean, obviously, but I didn't know if there was officially like a bar which the school cannot be below.
Well, yes, there is that. We're just not
I didn't think we're there. I was asking what it was.
Do you want to talk about that? There's corrective action plans, money tied to it. There's all kinds of
That's right. We're, we're, we're not close to that. But there are, there are school districts. If you, if your scores drop below a certain percent proficient, then they, there is increasing levels of intervention from the state. It is tied to some money as you get into the more significant levels of intervention, but it's also tied to external people kind of from the state endorsed by the state coming in and helping you design corrective action plans and work on your curriculum and your assessments and your instruction and those kinds of things. So yeah, we're, but we're not, we're not in that place. Some, some school districts spend a lot of time doing that, doing that kind of thing.
All right. So we're ready to move on to the high school and our eighth grade students for the regions exams. Okay.
All right. So high school regions exams, these are now grades eight through, actually, I can't even think of, I don't think any twelves, but I have eight through twelve there. So the E L A regions, this is the English regions exam. You could see over time, this is the average score did dip just a little bit. I'm not sure that I would be concerned about that. So you know, the the assessment, the exam does change from year to year. Different cohorts change from year to year. If we do, if we do see a train, a trend over time, that would be something that that we concerned about. But that eighty-six is still a solid average score for the English regions. This is the region's distribution and grade bands. You can see, you know, a good chunk of students eighty-five to one hundred, and then you see that seventy-five to eighty-four is the orange. And obviously, we want the blue to be as large as possible so that, so a little bit of a decrease in the size of that blue is something that we should pay attention to. But again, it may be small enough that if it's a one-year thing, not much of a concern. If it's a multi-year thing, might raise some concern.
Tenth grade. And in some high schools, they take the exam in eleventh grade, but we administer it here in tenth.
All right. So here are the algebra regions scores. This is both middle school and high school. So you can see the average score for, there's just a a handful of students who take it at the high school, generally students that weren't successful in eighth grade. Or in some cases, students that weren't here in eighth grade, they're kind of transfer in. And so they have to take that algebra assessment here at Greeley. But you can see the overall average score has increased over the last few years. And then again, you see the algebra regions distribution. For the regions exams, they call that mass eighty-five to one hundred is considered mastery. They have a little bit of a different label for it. And then here you have living environment regions exam. So in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, students only took that assessment at the high school level here at Greeley, not at the middle school. Last year, we had two cohorts simultaneously going, you know, taking that course. So it was offered in eighth grade and then also in ninth grade because those students hadn't had that as an offering in eighth grade. And so we put those students together. I had shared in the spring with the board and also those, the, those cohort parents, those results. You can see there the overall average score of an eighty-six for middle school and high school. And they were, they were very close between the schools at the middle, between Seven Bridges and Bell, and also at Greeley. They all hovered within a kind of a point of that average. And then again, the living environment regions distribution, and this course is now changing its name back to biology. So we'll be kind of shifting, shifting back over. And then here are regions exam average scores over the years. There, there's, you know, some, some things that are important to read this graph. One of them is chemistry, for example, is the regions is required as part of the course. Earth science, it's not required as part of the course. Last year, we had two sections of earth science, and there were just a handful of students that took that earth science. We had many more students in the course. Six students took the exam. And so you see the average score there of a sixty-six, which did jump out, you know, it jumped out to some of you, it jumped out to me as well. And when I dug in, I I noticed that six students took it. Students have to pass one science regions exam to graduate. So these may have been students that were not successful in living environment, or maybe they wanted to retake the living environment and take the earth sciences, see if they could, you know, get that science exam passing score. You see E L A, global living environment in U S history, U S history, many of our students take advanced placement U S history, A P U S, A push, they call it at Greeley. And so when you take A push, if you score a three or four or five, then you don't have to take that counts as your regions exam. So we'll usually offer two sections of U S history for students that don't take, we, we would offer as many as we needed to, but usually it's about two sections for students that don't take that A push exam, that A P exam or students who take the A P exam that don't have confidence that they're going to get a three or four or five. They would take the U S history and government. So there's two sections of that class. Most of them do, yeah.
Any questions about regions exams before we move to A P exams?
Okay. And I think I would say having kids at the high school level, that the counseling department does a pretty good job in recommending and looking at the previous years classes and and the way that they improved or not improved to say, no, absolutely, your child should be taking a push because he or she is doing this right now. Or I don't think that's the best route. That's the best choice for your child. You know, the child makes the decision, you know, with their parents or sometimes on their own. And but the counselor, I think, is pretty honest about the different options and and the outcomes and slash consequences that that might be. And but I think in the end, they, it's, it's nice because the options are presented in an honest way, but also you're still allowed to choose what you want, and then you have time to drop. So that, that's, that's key.
And that's been a shift that's been driven by the board over my time here, that we have open enrollment in our A P classes. We have prerequisites, right? You can't, you can't like just jump into a class without having the prerequisite class, like you can't go into U S history when you're in ninth grade. You got to take the, the two courses before that, but we do allow for open enrollment with some strong conversations with parents and students about, you know, what, what people need to be thinking about before they make their course selections. Were you going to say something, Alyssa?
Yeah, and it's unclear, right, what the future of the regions might be?
Yes.
Right? I mean, we don't know if they will exist going forward or not.
Yes.
And we're just at the mercy of the state to make that decision.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right. And and I've also, I've seen some really positive graphics and language coming out of the state about deeper learning for students and and the state defining deeper learning as kind of a more experiential project-based performance assessments that mirror a little bit more of real world kind of scenarios as opposed to multiple choice tests, which is interesting. As I saw a state graphic where they put it on a continuum and multiple choice tests were all the way down on what they were calling like the, I don't think they called it shallow learning, but it was like kind of the opposite of the deeper learning on the right side. And so I thought that was interesting in that most of what I'm presenting to you, to you tonight with regard to state assessments are a lot of what they are now kind of leaning away from potentially. So I think this could be some positive developments for us. And also different pathways for students to graduate, which is a positive thing.
Okay, we're moving into A P exams.
All right. So advanced placement exams, I started with a chart that just shows you or graph that shows you the number of exams that were taken in two thousand twenty-four. You can see that number is up to fifteen fifty-two, so trending upward slightly.
Is that more juniors than seniors taking it? Or do you have that breakdown?
I do. So so there fifty-seven percent were seniors, thirty-nine percent juniors, and then four percent ninth and tenth grade.
So is that number growing of the, of the younger kids? How, it's just jumped up by so much. I'm just curious who, what was the increase or where was the increase?
So the ninth and tenth graders typically, they're not enrolled in A P classes, but they can self-select to take one during the testing period. And so when, when you look at our exams, and we're talking about this in the strategic plan, whether or not it makes sense to move some stuff down to ninth and tenth grade. People really hesitant about that, but we're having discussions around it because of the pressure that our juniors are feeling because that's the first time that they really can enroll in A P courses. But you'll, but you won't see students enrolled in the upper level classes because they don't have the prerequisites.
But also I think sometimes we forget when we think about A P exams, we're only like sort of thinking about the core classes like A P calc and A P bio. We're not thinking about, I'm not even sure if this is the name of the class, but A P like music theory or
Right.
A P, A P Mandarin, so the foreign language A P. So I think that all kind of plays into this, the numbers here and the younger grades taking the A P classes, I mean, well, the A P exams, but not actually taking the course.
Yeah, right.
I have a slide that does have, I just skipped forward a few and then I can kind of, I'll go back, back one or two. But yeah, these are the A P exam results, and you can see the exam count on here. So you get a sense. I was trying to think about like where's, where's the jump? I was thinking about which are the new courses or which are the new, you know, new enrollments, sometimes some kind of the student population shifts over. A P seminar stands out as a new one.
We're going to see the A P macro one jump because you've got multiple sections.
I think there's five sections of A P macro right now.
One in my, one in my
Yes, that is true. We have some students who take two A P science courses.
That's right. And and the science, the A P science courses also, they, I, I would say for many students, they would say that there are some that are more accessible to students than others. The, you know, some have a reputation of being real, really challenging like that A P chem test and the, or the A P chem course and the A P physics course. Whereas A P environmental for most of the students has a, has a reputation of being a little bit more accessible as an A P for students that may not load up all their schedule with all A Ps. That's one that sometimes a student might give a shot to that A P.
Given the fact that the scores are lower, does that suggest that the students taking A P environmental science are perhaps less, less prepared? The, like that, you're saying that course is more accessible or is perceived to be more accessible?
Yeah, some, some of the more challenging A Ps, like if you looked at, you know, let's say students in the A P calc class, the, you know, the, the more advanced A P calc class. Often we look at those student schedules and they'll have a a whole like loaded up all the way across the board as A P. In some cases, A P environmental science could be an additional science for students. They might be part of that cohort, but they also might be a student that maybe we just wants to challenge themselves with one or two A Ps and that, and that's one. A P psych is another one that, you know, these are all challenging courses. They have a good reputation. Colleges like to see them. But there are some that that students seem to, you know, I'll give it a shot if I wouldn't necessarily take five of them. There are some that we kind of steer students towards as opposed to others.
A P U S history, they take the government and politics as an A exam, like they don't take the
Uh, no, A P gov is a different course. Is A P U S should be on here? Is it not on here? Should be on here.
Is it that bottom right one?
Oh, yeah.
A P, A P U S.
Yeah.
Yep. A P government is a diff, there is
That's right. There's an A P gov.
But nobody took, apparently nobody took that one.
A push class.
Also, if you look at less than five, those are like courses we don't typically offer, but kids do self-study and they take the exam. And often when they do that, they get a four or five. Right. So that's, go ahead, Alyssa.
No, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, also, I think it depends on if you're a junior or senior taking the class, because if you're a junior taking it, college is going to see what you get. And so you're trying very, very hard. If you are a senior taking it, your score doesn't come out to the summer after you've already graduated. And the score is not as important for their life. They could take a high score with them to to college and hopefully get the credit. But if they don't, aren't successful on it, there isn't a lot of repercussions for seniors. So I think sometimes seniors are, again, have exam, you know, exhaustion at the end of
Just like the eighth graders.
Right, exactly. And I think that right. And I think that when kids are taking the A Ps and they're, and they're a senior, there's a lot less pressure to do well as opposed to taking it when you're a junior.
That's probably true. If you, if you look at our bigger numbers, those courses are more accessible to all students, right? If you look as they become smaller, there are prerequisites that are associated with those courses that you can see that they're, not everyone qualifies to be able to enroll.
All right. So I'm just going to go back one slide just to give you a sense of the distribution. This was, this was a really positive thing, and I'm not sure that I can explain it. It's, I can explain what you're looking at, but I'm not exactly sure what, what generated this, these data. You can see that two thousand twenty-four is that lighter blue to the right side, and you see the, the strength in the number of fours and the number of fives and the kind of decrease in the ones, twos and threes. So that's the, that's the kind of trend that we want to see. But there was, there was no major shifts that I know of in terms of like major curricular initiatives or, or, you know, anything, anything like that, prerequisite shifts or anything that might drive that. But, you know, I think it's just a tribute to the, to the students in the community and the teachers that, that, you know, they, they've really brought it and did a good, strong, solid job, twenty-three, twenty, or I'm sorry, twenty-four.
Any more questions about the A Ps before we move into the S A T, A C T? All right. We're getting towards the
Yeah, this is kind of
The end here.
Coming home. S A Ts and A C T exams. So this is also, this is, things are shifting pretty significantly with regard to these assessments and and colleges and universities and their positions on test optional or test required. We are still seeing a significant number of colleges that are test optional. There, there is some narrative in, you know, out in kind of the, the press about some very competitive colleges considering, should we shift back to test required? And what has test optional done now that we have some data in terms of who we admitted and how they've done?
Is it optional really at the end of the day?
Is it, is it optional? Really, what we're, what we're hearing is it, it, it really is optional. And you're starting to see that in the numbers of students that are taking the assessment. You do see in this case, it's not the numbers, it's the average scores. So you see the mean score, average score is that, but like total combined score. And then you have the E W R, which is the literacy part, the kind of reading vocabulary, et cetera, part, and then the math part. So you can see over time, the, the students continue to be very strong. And then the A C T scores holding steady at a twenty-nine.
These are unbelievable scores for
Yeah, they're very high.
Unbelievable.
And then this was an interesting one, based on what I was just describing with regard to how many colleges and universities are now And then this was an interesting one, based on what I was just describing with regard to how many colleges and universities are now test optional. You are starting to see a drop in the number of students that are taking the SAT ACT, holding pretty steady. All right. And then kind of bring it bringing this home, you see National Merit, commended students, semifinalists, finalists, and one recipient of the class of two thousand twenty four. Ninety nine percent of the class went on to higher education. And then we close up with a list, two slides worth of the universities that students matriculated into. And as as I wrap up, if there's any other questions, we can or discussion, we can do that. I do want to. Give some credit to Adam Schoenbart, who's in in the back there who pulls a lot of this data. He's one of his areas of expertise among the many is he's kind of our spreadsheet guru and data hound. And so he extracts a lot of data and slices and dices it a lot of different ways. So I just want to give him a shout out. I I present a lot of it, but he did a lot of it behind the scenes. So thank you, Adam.
I know that was a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam and Adam. Yeah.
So we're gonna send this out to the community too on Sunday to let everyone know that this is available. And then if people have questions, they can certainly they can contact Adam and contact their building principal. We'd be happy to answer them. Right, thank you.
Does that do it?
That's it. That does it.
Okay, so now it's time for committee reports. I'm gonna look down on the end and see if anybody's got one. Oh, you have the NISBA stuff, Hillary. Do you want to do that real quick?
Yeah, I'll do it.
We'll just go down the row.
Monday night, yes, I went to the West Putt sort of pre. Meeting for the meeting. To talk about advocacy priorities for the year. And they're pretty much aligned with everything we've been talking about, you know, like making sure state aid is something we still get. Hopefully not getting it cut, saving the sort of full carlos provision. Getting some more guidance around things like the electric school buses, maybe some money. A lot of the advocacy priorities are exactly what you'd expect them to be is if you're going to ask things of us, maybe you could provide some funding for them to happen. And continuing to prioritize asking for funding around things like school safety, both online and in person. So nothing, nothing that really warrants. Any discussion, just the usual. I did send up to the state in advance of tomorrow's meeting on the resolutions. Our confusion over the resolution about the school calendar, where we said that as a board, what we would really like is as much flexibility as possible to. Acknowledge and give time for holidays that are important to our community while not extending the school year. So. I don't know. It was a very poorly written resolution. When I was on the West Putt meeting, it was very clear that many people were confused by the wording of the resolution. So hopefully I'll get some clarity around that in the meeting tomorrow night, which hopefully will not be ate out. So I will be on that.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that for on behalf of of the board, Hillary.
As much as I can, and I will let y'all know what happens.
Hillary, are there any resolutions that. You would encourage the community to sort of get involved in writing those advocacy letters? Or partake in, because they have sample ones online. Are there any that you would recommend?
So I think it probably warrants waiting till after tomorrow night and seeing what NISBA endorses. Generally, this meeting goes pretty much according to. The ones that NISBA has come out and said, you know, their smaller committee has said, we should support these. That's generally how districts vote. By the end of the meeting, every year, there is a district proposing something that's somewhere between ridiculous and truly offensive. And we have to discuss it until most of the districts say, no, we don't want to support that. But. So maybe it's mostly around funding again. And so I think that if we see what NISBA's priorities are and where they're putting sort of the bulk of their advocacy work. That's probably where if there are things that are important to this district, it makes sense to lend community voices rather than going out. On our own, but I will I will keep people posted on that.
Thank you.
Alyssa, what do you got?
So we had our first communication committee meeting this week and we had our new community members who joined our committee. So that was great. And we just got started the ball rolling, talking about our opportunities for growth with communication with the community. And just talked about exploring some new ideas as far as some areas where we thought we could increase. Increase our communications and make them more impactful. And some of the ideas that were floated were, you know, streamlining things that we've already started to do with the Week. That one Sunday publication from the district really lines up with the PTA publications that are going out on Sundays and Monday mornings. So parents seem very receptive to just getting, having a place where they can look one place and see all the communication coming out. And I think that the Week is really helpful partnering up with the PTA's emails. And then we just talked about other ways that we can. You know, other opportunities that we can come up with and we will meet back and plow through them. So we'll let you know.
Okay. Matt, no? Kaylee?
So I think Hillary, am I right? We, well, we had policy meeting, which we're gonna talk about later.
Coming up.
But I think, did you want, I think you wanted to talk about something in the policy ma- thing? I remember, you don't know?
Hillary, you had shared that you were gonna.
Yeah, that you were.
Introduce the First Amendment policy.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna do that when we talked about the.
Okay, so we'll we'll do it when when it comes to policy.
Three point two.
I was like, we need to do something else? No, I absolutely will, but I think it probably makes sense to do a conjunction.
Okay. And then we had facilities, but Ryan, you're gonna talk about that.
Okay. So, yeah, we have facilities meetings. So Josh and Mario and Architects gave us the rundown on how things are going with the Bond project. We also talked about some of the general maintenance stuff that had happened over the summer, upgrades and things that had taken place. And then Josh encouraged us to kind of get the ball rolling on thinking about a next ten year plan of sustainability for us, which was hard to. I don't know, get our minds in that frame, but I understand the importance of of having that kind of long range thinking. So I'm looking forward to coming back to that and seeing what you what you come up with at the next meeting. So. I think that's it, right? Did I miss anything, Kaylee?
Yeah, no, I we just, I mean, we appointed all the new members to the committee and that was exciting. Lots of robust conversations and good questions.
For sure. Okay, that brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comment. In respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented. So if you have a comment, please step up to the mic and identify yourself.
Hi, everyone. For the record, my name is Joelle Anderson and I'm the president of the PTA. And I come here as the president of the PTA. I'm standing here with my colleague, Toni Gelber. She's our corresponding secretary. Next week is Board of Ed Appreciation Week. So yay, yay. So we are here. It's a time for us to recognize your commitment to the children in the Chapel Court Central School District. Ryan, Hillary, Kaylee, Matt and Alyssa, thank you for paying playing such a critical role within our school district. Thank you for dedicating your time to improve our children's public education. I'm sure each of you ran, based on a personal experience, maybe, maybe not. I know my father back in nineteen eighty six. Now I was too young to remember this. But when he ran for the Board of Ed in Clarkstown to improve the special ed program in his tenure, he did that. I remember how much time he spent away from us trying to do that. It's time away from your work, your family and much more. So we, as the PTA, wanted to acknowledge your efforts and to present you with this token of our appreciation. Thank you.
May they approach.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It seemed like they might be customized. Thank you very much, Joelle.
Thank you guys so much.
If only we got gifts at every public comment.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carolyn Elwood and I am a middle school art teacher at both Bell and Seven Bridges. And I am also an officer for the Chapel Congress of Teachers. And on behalf of the teachers, we would also just like to thank you for the work that you do in supporting us and believing in us. To create the best possible learning environments for our students and trusting us to nurture and tend to the culture of teaching and learning in our schools. We know that one week isn't enough, considering the work that you do all year. But please know that we are continually grateful for all that you contribute to our success, which in turn contributes to the success. Of each of the students in our care. So thank you so much for all you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Last call for any other public comment. Okay, very good. Now to approvals and ratifications. Under three, we've got two things to do. Three point one, I I will move that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four board meeting. Can I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And then I'll do the motion for this one. And then Hillary, I'll turn to you to tell us more about it. So three point two, this is the First Amendment Policy First Reading, Policy twenty eighty. Again, this is their first reading, so we're not going to try to adopt anything here. So Hillary, would you like to just tell us a little bit about what the policy committee has come up with?
Sure. So. Some of the backstory on this is that over the past decades, really, the courts have been very split. On how First Amendment issues, in particular, the treatment of off campus speech. That may or may not find its way on campus has been treated. And without going into the two hour seminar I've got on this. The world was a lot less complicated when the first case law was developed on student speech, right? There was no internet is the basic difference. So the original case law on this is very, very straightforward and over the years it's gotten murkier and murkier. And there were a number of circuit splits, meaning that different courts in different parts of the country had come to different conclusions on very similar fact patterns. Overarchingly, I would say that speech that was not targeted at specific people was more permitted. And speech that was meaner towards adults involved in school was more permitted than than speech directed at students. But those are sort of broad generalization. Then more recently, there was a Supreme Court case that put much more. Had much more limiting language around off campus speech and how school districts could address it and can address it. And. It's still fairly confusing, right? So that the the legal standard is a. Belief that the off campus speech would have a substantial interference with on campus. Whether that means that students felt afraid to come to school or that it would be substantially disruptive. Or there are a lot of terms that are used that are not really defined. But there's at least some clarity, albeit maybe. Maybe I have some opinions about that clarity. There is at least some clarity around the language guiding school districts in terms of what speech is actionable for off campus speech. And again, this does not impact on campus speech or speech at campus activities. And likewise, around some of the other areas of the First Amendment, like religion in. On campus and whether religious expression comes from students or is perceived to come from the school or faculty. There has been a lot of case law over the years, some of which is more confusing than the others. But it is coming to enough of a consensus that there is some legal guidance. And so we, as a policy committee, wanted to codify some of that First Amendment guidance as a policy. So that it's uniformly applied across the district in different buildings, in different spaces. And so that both students and faculty and staff have consistent expectations in terms of how. What is permitted is what is not permitted and what is actionable by its provision. Is that fair?
Yeah, I.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I also would just like to add, last year, particularly at Greeley, we had some student activism, which is great. But also with that came the need for Dr. Seppi at times to provide clarity. And we feel like the 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 policy that we've crafted sets the clarity for everyone at the at the start. And so it'll help our students really understand what the expectations are in our spaces. And also, I I feel like the policy is very respectful of who people are and their identities and allows us to navigate conversations with our students. And sometimes with our staff, but mainly our students in a way that I I think will be proactive and supportive. And so I think that this policy allows us to do that as well. But again, this is just like our with our neutrality policy, there's not a lot of examples for us to pull from. And so we've created a policy with the with the support of our attorney, but we would like some feedback on it before we bring it forward again. Or at least provide the opportunity for feedback before we put it before the board again for a second reading. And so maybe instead of reading the whole thing, because it's just a lot. I could just chunk it out and it's on the website and we're sending it out on Sunday. But the the first part is about freedom of speech and expression and what is okay and isn't okay within our buildings. And then off campus, which our our building administrative team would have to address, should it start to impact the educational environment. Then we have a section on student initiated initiated newspapers or written materials, because we do have those. Publications happen here. Sometimes we have kids try to. Create their own publications and distribute. So there's some clear expectations around that, which we're very supportive of with with supervision and support of our faculty. Then we have. Then we have a section that really talks about off campus behavior and what what rights are that that our students have. But then some limitations on those rights, that they start to impact our our school environment. And then we tease that out a little bit more and we talk about how our principal team will address that. And then when our principal team will reach out to our district council, just to make sure that we're not impinging on anyone's rights when we're trying to do our work here. And then we have a a section on free speech rights of our staff and faculty, because we feel like that's really important too. And then then we have a section on assembling and how students can do that in a way that is safe. And and respectful of the educational environment, everyone here and in our staff. And then we have a a section on freedom of religion. So I I feel like they're they're good guy, it's a good. Policies are are important guidance documents for us to do the work with our with our students and our staff. So this is another opportunity for us to provide a guidance document for us all to anchor in as we do our work forward with kids. So that's that's the that's the policy. So I encourage people to, they have a moment to read it. And to email the full board and me your feedback. I'm gonna ask by next Thursday if that's possible. If you send it to one board, it's gonna go to all of us, because it's gotta get back to Kaylee, Hillary and I, because we'll meet and and look at it together to see if we need to make any adjustments. So thank you for that. Any questions?
I would just reiterate, I think it's really important. We have a very engaged and intelligent and opinionated constituency. And I would I would like to draw on that intellect and that engagement and say, for this one, like, we really would love your feedback. Because this one is really, there's a lot of subjectivity and a lot of gray areas here. And I think just having more like smart people weigh in on this is important. Because. This one is a policy that's gonna set the framework for like, that will long outlast Dr. Ackerman and all of us. So I think this is really important for our students. So I would say that engagement on this one is really important. So by next Thursday, you said?
Yeah, that would be helpful. So we're gonna send it, it's up now. I'm gonna send it out on Sunday at six.
Yeah.
And then we're asking for feedback by Thursday.
Okay.
So we can review it. Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this topic? Lisa, we don't need to take any further action, right? Yeah, just double check. Okay.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented.
Can I have a motion for four point one?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend four point two non instructional as presented.
I'll move four point two. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're up to item five, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It's recommended that the board approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the superintendent. We have, can I have a motion for 5.1 through 5.6 tonight?
I move.
And just to summarize, we've got some CSC summaries, financial statements, the gymnastics that we heard a little bit about, a couple of other things, so.
Nugget ice maker?
Yeah. Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item six, this is going to be acknowledging receipt of the following contracts approved by the superintendent per Board Policy 6085. Let's do 6.1 and 6.2 together. Can I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item seven, facilities. So as is typical with the bond and the capital updates, we're going to see these from time to time. We've got, the board acknowledges receipt of change orders approved by the superintendent and adopted at, on the June 4th. Oh, wait, that seems wrong.
Yeah, per resolution, we adopted.
Oh, per the resolution was adopted at that date. Okay, my mistake. I misread that. So let me start that again. So we're acknowledging receipt of change orders approved by a board resolution that allows the superintendent to, to do that, that took place in 2017. So these are items 7.1 through 7.5. Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I will just say that the facilities committee, we did go over the change orders and had a very lengthy discussion on the different change orders and how normal it is or not normal it is and what we can do to prevent them if we can, and-
I learned what K-Creek is as well.
Yes, so there was a discussion.
Don't hold out, Ryan.
I'll tell you later. And then we have item eight. Item eight, be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby upholds the decision of the Superintendent of Schools regarding a student's Horace Greeley High School grade point average calculation as the result of an appeal by a parent as set forth in correspondence dated August 22nd, 24, 24, and presented to the board at this meeting. And be it for the resolve that the district clerk advised the parent of this determination. I will move this motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, this passes four to one. And notice of future meetings. We will gather next on Wednesday, October 23rd at 7:00. And we will be getting the literacy program update at that time. We'll be here, and we'll be here again November 13th for the elementary school program presentation. And with that-
Hold on, I need, I need to have the last word. So on behalf of Lisa, myself, and my team, before we close the meeting, I'd like to extend our deepest gratitude to the board for all the work that you do to support our students, staff, and community. Your role is often a thankless one, requiring countless hours of thoughtful discussion, difficult decisions, and a steadfast commitment to the well-being of our students. Unless you're in this role, people have no idea how hard this job is and how much time you put into supporting the work of the district. And we all understand that it's not always easy, but it is essential. And the impact you make on our community and for our students is profound. Your dedication to improving the educational experience is both inspiring and deeply appreciated. Through the, though the challenges are great, the rewards are even greater, especially when you walk into our elementary schools and you see the excitement of our students as they come to learn every day. It gets different in the middle school and the high school. Speaking as a parent. But our kids show up to learn because you set the tone. You set the tone for this district and what we're about. And we thank you, thank you for your efforts, thank you for all you do, and thank you for volunteering your time and the time away from your families to be a part of our community in this way. We appreciate you, and you'll get our gift next week. During the actual week. And don't worry, the poster will be up.
Step on Joelle.
The poster will be up on Monday. Please take pictures in front of it with your children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn at 8:53?
No, if anyone else wants to say anything else nice about us, feel free.
Back to normal.
We're really enjoying this, I gotta tell you.
I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? We are adjourned.